The League of Women Voters of Lincoln County welcomes you to our forum for the upcoming Lincoln County School Board candidates. Jean Cowan will moderate the forum. After brief introductions, the candidates will respond to questions. Each candidate will then close with a one-minute statement. Thank you for attending.
Tonight, we're able to welcome six of our eight candidates that are seeking a position on the Lincoln County School Board. Unfortunately, Stephen Vogel, who's running in Zone Four, East County, and Centilla McKinley, who is running in Zone Four in the South County, were unable to participate. But the six candidates who are able to join us this evening from Zone Three, West County, which is the Newport area, include Ron Beck, the incumbent, Lance Vanderbeck, Erica Wilson, and Mike Rawls. So thank you all for being here. That's the full slate for that particular office. Zone Four in East County, we're welcoming Peter Vincy. And Zone Five, South County, Eric Goss. So again, thank you for being here. I do need to remind you that when you're speaking, you need to speak clearly and not too fast. This will be transcribed and reshown on YouTube through our website. So tonight's format will be that we'll have a minute for each of you for your opening statements, and then I have a series of five questions that you'll have two minutes each to answer. And I will signal some time. I have a little sign here that says you have 30 seconds left. I hope that that picks up. Okay.
If you don't move it, it's fine.
And I am setting a timer that will go off when your time's up, so you will have an audible warning to let you know when you're done. And then a minute each for closing statements. And I've done my best to sort of bunch the names up and rotate who will start each time. We will do all six of you together because after all, you are going to be serving on one board for the Lincoln County School Board. So I think that's everything. I already have permission to use your first names. And let's get started with your opening statements. So I think we will begin with Lance Vanderbeck, please.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to participate tonight, Jean. I'm employed by the City of Newport as the Airport Director. Sorry, my dog is licking my hand. I'm married to my lovely wife, Jillian Vanderbeck, who's a kindergarten teacher at Ya Queen of View. We have a six-year-old, her name is Charlotte, who is also a kindergartner at Ya Queen of View. I've got two other kids from a previous marriage, Jacob and Leola, who are 14 and 15. For me, education is the most valuable thing that you can give anyone. As a board member, it is critical to provide Lincoln County students with the best education possible, providing programs that will build students' critical thinking, making them resilient and capable to successfully pursue their life goals beyond high school.
Thank you. Next up, Ron Beck.
Oh, good evening. I'm Ron Beck, and as Jean said, I'm currently your School Board member for Zone Three, the area around Newport, from Seal Rock North, basically Aggett Beach South, into the border right on the Ya Queen of Bay. My wife and I settled here in 1992 and raised three children that all graduated from Newport High School. One of them is a teacher there today. We've been quite proud of them and the education that was provided to them because we recognized early on that our involvement in that education was key to it being successful. I'm the telecommunications and network engineer for Central Lincoln PUD. Very technical aspect of my day, but it gives me a different level of appreciation for the day-to-day that our teachers and the classified staff have as they teach our kids. So I welcome your evening and hope to hear more.
Thank you. Erica Wilson.
Wow, that I needed to unmute. Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to hear. Thank you so much for inviting me to participate in this event. My name is Erica Wilson, and I'm running for Zone Three School Board position. I decided to run because I am passionate about education. As many opportunities for my unique expertise can help. As a community, nation, and even world, we've had a very difficult year. No environment has felt this charged more acutely than education. I hope to share not only my many years of experience in education, but also my business leadership to help grow, build, and unify our school communities. My family has been part of the Newport community for over 20 years. Several of my in-laws are teachers or former teachers of our district. I have a recent Newport High School graduate and two children currently in school. So I have a deep personal interest in sharing our schools revive, our school thrive. I feel it makes sense and back of it may be the ideal candidate for Zone Three. Having worked in education for so many years, I'm keenly aware of the challenges facing our schools, from bunches of pandemic challenges to trouble the teachers' faith.
I think time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Mike Rawls.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Mike Rawls. Served in the Marine Corps, enlisted right out of Portland, Oregon. Over the years, I've ran a National Weather Service Office, and I retired from there in 2005 and moved back to Oregon. I've been here since 2008 in Newport. I love this community. I raised, helped raise two grandchildren here, and they both went to school. My daughter taught at the local high school. I have a deep and abiding interest in our education system, and I believe that we need to continue to try and advance the system to include everybody. I believe in public education more than anything else. I grew up with one of the best systems in Portland when I was a child. Thank you again for having me.
Thank you. Let me readjust slightly here. Peter Vincy, right?
Correct.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No worries. Thanks, Jean, and thanks to the League of Women Voters in Lincoln County. My name is Peter Vincy, and I am running for a position on the School Board in Zone Four because I love teaching. During my 28 years teaching at Toledo High, I loved watching students progress in writing and reading and learning Spanish and developing their technology skills and developing the social skills necessary for them to be successful contributors when they graduated. I feel I have real insight into the most important task the school district takes on: helping kids learn. I know firsthand how school board policies affect student learning. As a board member, I will be able to help keep the board focused on how the policies we create will affect the classroom. This is the critical mission of the School Board, and I will be able to provide a perspective that hasn't been on the School Board for nearly 20 years.
Thank you. And Eric.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone participating tonight. My name is Eric Goss. I live in Yaw Hots. I used to be the voice of the Taft Tigers until everything happened last spring. I now work as a general contractor on the coast. I'm a graduate of Walport High School as well as the University of Oregon. I'm running. I didn't know I was running against Centilla at the time. I actually went up and told her I was going to drop out. She laughed at me and the notion of that. Part of the reason is because she carries everybody's water in our town, and I guess I'm running because I'm really tired of not doing something. And I think a lot of people are kind of starting to feel that way, too, in that we're tired of not seeing the differences and the changes made that we want to see. One of the best comments when I left Taft that one of the students gave me was that as the voice of the Tigers, they said I was the best hype man they could have asked for. Specifically, I want to help the board with its goals, and especially in establishing a nonprofit. I want us to develop our property, not sell. And one of the characteristics that's been mentioned throughout is resiliency as well as fortitude when it comes to learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will launch right into our questions. I have developed with the help of the fellow league members five questions, and we are not taking questions from the audience tonight just to answer that in advance in order to stay within our allotted time and because it doesn't work real well on Zoom. So you will have two minutes to answer, and on the first one, we are going to lead off with Ron. What motivated you to seek your Zone's position on the Lincoln County School Board, and what are the top three issues that you want to work on?
Oh, well, back when I sought the position, it was because Doug, or Jay Feinman, had just stepped down in 2002, rather. The school district was going through a very difficult time. We were facing $11 to $12 million deficit or reduction from what we were doing. And the superintendent at the time had come up with a not very well-thought-out approach of how to adjust the school district. So I was yelling at the radio one evening while Don Cohen was doing his radio show, and my wife finally told me, "You need to either shut up or do something about it." So I put my name in the hat. I went into the School Board at the time, the four that were there, and I unloaded. I told them exactly what I thought as a parent of students that were going to school, someone in the community that was involved in a number of their technology issues. And two days later, Doug Hunt calls me and tells me I got the job, and I was pretty surprised. From there, it was, the motivation really hasn't changed. It's to provide that level of education. We adopted the strategy of every child, every day, some years ago because we meant that. We meant that every student deserves to have the education they need today, each day. And we recognize that it varies every day. That's a different teaching model than what we've been used to over the years, and it's taken cultural change, it's taken a number of financial changes and policy changes to get there. But stability, stability for parents is one of the big pieces we look for. The quality education, graduation, one of the big ones for me is to be there and see students move from being our student to being our citizen has been one of the biggest motivators for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mike. Same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Sure, please.
What motivated you to seek your Zone's position on the board? And what are the top three issues that you'd like to work on?
I have several, more than three, but one of the things that I really concerned about is diversity and acknowledging the differences we have in this school district and how we treat each group of people. Another one is homeless children. For my church, we spent a lot of time, when we were able to do it, Randy's Read and Feed, our social committee dealt with that, and we still do the stone soup once every month for our church. The biggest issue for me is direct and constant contact with the parents and the students, not just from the teachers and the district, but from the School Board. They have a lot of questions, and telling them that they can only talk to you for two minutes or if not at all is just not a good idea. If we have to spend more time with the parents when they're asking questions, then we should do that. We should be there for them and help assuage their fears and to help them find problems. The one thing I learned all the years I managed Weather Service Office is the more heads we had involved, the quicker we could come up with solutions. Sticking it in the hands of five people and saying, "This is all we've got," or "We got that in the administration, but we don't want any outside help, or we don't want to discuss it with people," that's not going to work. I really strongly believe in communication.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Peter, would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I've got it, Jean.
Okay.
I think one of the things that motivated me as a teacher and continues to motivate me is the recognition of student learning, and that happens in the classroom when a kid will say, "Oh, I get it." And the thing that amazes me about teaching and about our school district is that moment happens hundreds of times across the district. And I'd like to be able to be a part of that process again in supporting those moments in kids when they really turn on to learning. For me, the top three issues I think the district is facing, probably the most important one is to transition from a sense of languishing in student lives to a sense of flourishing. I'm stealing that idea from the New York Times. They ran an article about the mental health of people across the country, and they came up with that term of languishing. And I think it's really apparent, and when I talk to kids and when I talk to teachers about how kids are responding to their learning, they're just not as engaged as they were in in-person learning. And I think it's a real opportunity for the school district to, when we get through this last little bit of the year, and get into next year, that the creativity of the teachers and staff and district administration will really set that on. Last couple of seconds here, I'm really interested in helping to create a real positive school climate in all the buildings and all our unique communities, and I'm also very interested in diversity and equity and inclusion issues, and know that the school district has just kind of started that ball rolling in their policy, and I'm really interested in seeing it being implemented as we move forward.
Thank you. And you will have a chance to get more into some of these issues. Erica?
I think the reason that I was interested in getting involved with the School Board is because of the year that we've had across the country and watching everybody struggle trying to figure out how to move forward with the pandemic. And kind of like Ron, I was like sitting in front of my TV and kind of yelling at it that, you know, like, and then I sat there and thought to myself, you know, I have a lot of experience in education and in mental health, and I've worked for schools throughout the country for 30 years in various roles, and I have a lot of information and a lot to give. And I thought, why am I just complaining? Why am I not giving it? So I really just wanted an opportunity to give back to the community with the years of experience that I have. And in terms of the three things that I'm looking forward to working on, one of the things is getting kids caught up. You know, as a parent, I feel like my child lost a year of schooling, even though we had, everybody did their best with the distance learning. You know, I have relatives who are teachers, and I know how hard it was for them, and I know how hard it was for kids, and I know how hard it was for parents to try to encourage the kids to keep learning. So, you know, coming up with a plan of how we can address that together, I think is really important. Another thing that's really important to me is creating safe, respectful, and inclusive learning environments. I think today with all of the, everything that's going on with equity and everything that's going on with critical race theory and these different things, that we have to work really hard as a school to create environments that are accepting of all students. And another thing I wanted to work on is open communication and transparency. Another thing, and I could talk about that more later.
Okay. Thank you. And Lance, please.
Yes, so one of the things that stood out to me was an event that happened actually at a Willamina School District Board meeting where the students had decided they didn't want anything to do with students bringing the Confederate flag or wearing Confederate flag clothing onto campus. And some of the School Board members were frankly dumbstruck as to why the students would be against that. They made specious arguments for it. This gets into what some of the people also tonight have said about an environment in our schools where everyone feels welcome. And our school should be a place where our students are allowed to be presented with challenging ideas. It's part of the growth of being a student, but there's a basic respect and decency with which we treat all human beings regardless that we need more of. I'm, that incident that I saw is one of the reasons. Some of the top issues that I see facing the board are embracing technology, being a step ahead of the curve when it comes to these things, not struggling to catch up to that, because I think we're at a point where a lot of people would say we're still struggling to catch up rather than being ahead of the curve. I think that we're on the ocean. We need to embrace that. High expectations, but also high support for our students. The homelessness issue, the amount of those students, there are these, poverty is this issue that we cannot address directly as a school district because it's outside our purview, but it's something that directly impacts us every single day. And then finally philosophically, what does it mean to learn for our students? We need not just books, but how do we embrace and grow the minds, too?
Thank you. Okay, okay. Okay, well, next question, I think we'll start this time with Erica.
Dean?
I'm scared. Sorry.
It's Lance. Eric jumped in there and gave an answer to that question, so I didn't get an opportunity to answer that question.
I apologize.
It probably was me.
I thought I was hearing things.
I'm trying to track, but please answer the question.
Don't worry. I was just going to say, how do you follow up with all those great answers?
Thank you for speaking up, too.
No, no worries. Not a problem. So my motivator really, I think, is the same for everybody, you know, making sure that the children have a good education, especially seeing how my daughter is learning, starting off her educational career here at Newport at Ya Queen of View. Definitely want to see her and all of the students have a good variety of education and programs available to them to learn. I think some of the issues that I hear about and see that the school is facing are behavioral issues in the classrooms, not only behavioral issues from the students in the classrooms, but how important it is to have staff well-trained to support in making sure that they can handle those issues that come up from time to time efficiently, effectively, and in a safe manner, not only for them but for the students as well. I think another item that needs to be looked at is making sure that, you know, your staff is heard at the board level, making sure that staff has input and say in their day-to-day activities, because as a board, not all of the decisions are going to be a one-fit-all for every school. Every school has different ways of teaching. Every school has different, you know, values, but in the end, we all have the same goal is making sure that our kids are well-educated in a safe environment. And I think that is really important and kind of lacking is just the communication from not only the top-down but from the bottom-up.
Thank you.
All I got. Thanks, Jean.
And once again, my apologies. I'm trying. I get caught up in listening, and I forget that I'm supposed to be doing some of these other things. Erica, we will start with you this time. And the question is, I think it's important for everyone to remember that the School Board's primary task is to set priorities for the district. With that in mind, what is your vision of the relationship between your role as a School Board member, the administration, teachers, and your fellow board members?
Well, I think one thing that's key is that communication, that transparency that I had mentioned earlier. I think when I talk to my teachers, and one of the things that is hardest for them is that they don't feel like they're heard. And I think also, too, the communication systems that we have for parents are need improvement. I mean, even today with the spring conferences, they had to change Zoom links and had to find them, and it was very complicated. So I think we need to work on simplifying our communication systems and making them more accessible. And I also feel like we should allow teachers to have more creativity and use all of their tremendous teaching skills with our students. There's a lot of pop-down kind of information that comes from the state about which curriculum to use, and I would like to see us using, giving their teachers the possibility of being able to pilot and try a different curriculum that they've used that they find to be successful. I know they don't like to be prescribed teachers. They'd rather be able to use their creativity in ways that will individually help their students. So, you know, as a board member, you have to be able to connect all of these different stakeholders and be able to listen to them and to be able to come to a consensus together. And that's something that I've done in the past that I feel that I have really strong skills at. I've worked as a school psychologist and as a principal of the School for Children with Special Needs with Autism. So when Lance talked about how one, you know, one child in the classroom can change the entire culture of that classroom, like, completely, I worked with kids who could be taught in the school classrooms. And for us to create a safe environment, we have to be able to be the voice for everyone, for the students, the parents, and the teachers, everyone that's going to be involved.
Thank you. Peter, you're up next. Do you want me to repeat the question?
I think I've got it, Jean. The way I understand it, the primary task of the School Board is to supervise their one employee, who is a superintendent. And as part of that task, the board members need to interact with each other in terms of respect and understanding and listening to other points of view. The goal of the School Board is to create policies, to adopt policies, to approve policies that come to them from staff, from the superintendent. And it's incumbent on the School Board members to understand how these policies are going to affect the school community. As part of that, School Board members need to really listen to staff, to community, especially to families and to students. One of the things that I appreciated about Dr. Gray is I joined a listening session she had with the East County community, and I really appreciated her efforts in soliciting people's opinions about what was going well, what was needed, and I think that's really an important role for the superintendent. But I also think it's an important role for the members of the board. And the board members, they have their board meetings, and there is a chance for communities, the community members to express their opinions. I would like to see the board find additional avenues, formal and informal, to be sounding boards for all the stakeholders in the district.
Thank you. Eric? You want me to repeat that?
All right, now it's my turn. So the easiest way to explain it, I think, is I'm a big sports guy. So for me, the relationship between the board members, the teachers, the administrators, the students, and the community, in that sports team aspect, is everyone kind of has their own role with that. At the same point in time, there are times when somebody's calling the shots, and it's incumbent upon everybody to work together as a team to get that play done, to get through that series. And if someone says, "Oh, I'm not going to do it," well, all of a sudden, a base hit that would have been a ground out now just scored a run, and you just lost the game because you didn't know how to work as a team. And so that relationship, I think, maybe sounds simplistic, but it's also, we try to overthink things with this, too. So I want ultimately the Lincoln County School District to be a place where teachers can move on to better jobs and that we're hiring people from within to fulfill those jobs so that people take, so that I believe this is absolutely a place that people want as a destination place with where we're located. But we also want to be a supportive place for someone young that says, "You know what? I got a great start here. I loved it. Now I'm taking a better job somewhere else." So in a lot of ways, we need to be very supportive while also at the same time letting people do their job within their roles, such as the teachers, and not trying to overthink it too much.
Thank you. Lance?
All right. Jean, could you repeat the question for me just that I have a good understanding of it?
We're talking about the primary task of the board being the setting priorities for the district. So with that in mind, what is your vision of the relationship between your role as a board member, the administration, teachers, and your fellow board members?
Well, I think as a board member and the board, we really need to work with the superintendent, making sure that everybody is making critical decisions and moving the school district forward in a positive way. making sure that everybody is making critical decisions and moving the school district forward in a positive way. You know, the school board also should be a sounding board for parents and concerned people to come in and give feedback about what they see maybe happening, or what changes they feel that they need, or changes that should be taking place in the school. Those ideas then should be, you know, thought about and then given direction to the superintendent to come back with information and make an informed decision about what needs to happen and take place in that. I think, you know, one of the other things is that we really kind of are lacking in the volunteer phase. And I would say that my grandpa Van Vanderbeck started up a group called Reading Pals way back when they lived here, and I think it was the 90s. Ron Beck could probably tell me the better timeframe of when, when that happened. But, you know, programs like that, it was an enjoyment for the older generation to get in contact with the younger generation, help them learn and see and get that excitement, not only for the kid, but for the older generation, to help people read, getting, learning to read and stuff. And I think one of the downfalls of that was it became harder to become a volunteer at the schools. And I think that one of the reasons why it became harder was the, the computer. You know, I'm, I'm kind of at that age where the computer still frightens me a little bit when I hit buttons, and I, I think, oh my God, I'm gonna wipe out, you know, the entire Pentagon or something like that if I do this. But I think the schools should have a training program, or at least have somebody there to help people who want to be involved and volunteer in the classroom to help out with programs, not only for reading, but sports and stuff. I think that was a buzzer.
Thank you. Ron.
Peter was spot-on. The number-one priority really is hiring that chief executive officer. And in this case, the superintendent, you know, manages what is $128 million enterprise that is a county-wide school district, the last, the last in Oregon that is a county-wide. So we're really four districts operating as one. We are different schools. Our, our kids move from one school to the next. We will have students moving from Walport to Newport to Taft throughout the school year. So the priorities are to work with the superintendent so that they understand this is there, to develop a budget that provides continuity and sustainability to the programs that we put into place. And then, and finally, working with the curriculum itself, funding it, articulating it, and making sure that a student that graduates from Walport High School with a diploma has the same educational currency, the same diploma as someone from Toledo or from Taft or from Newport or from one of our charter schools. As kids move around, I have a grandson who's a first grader, and he can move from anywhere in the county depending on where his parents happened to live at the time. We need to make sure that the curriculum, the learning that he is seeing at those early ages is consistent across the district. That articulated curriculum has been helpful to date. Unfortunately, with COVID, we saw, how do we deliver it? We were one-to-one in Chromebooks prior to COVID above the third grade. We're one-to-one in Chromebooks everywhere now, but our kids were not learning on Chromebooks prior to COVID. That was a big bump for us, and that should be a priority moving forward, technology.
Thank you. Okay, okay. And Mike, please.
Yeah, I'm with Peter and, and Ron. Our number-one employee is a superintendent, and our job would be to, the school board would be essentially to monitor what she's doing. It is a big enterprise. And to be the communication, basically the level of communication between our constituents, which is, which is the, the parents and the children and, and the teachers, I think, and other people who work in and around the school districts. To me, communication is, is really critical. When I, when I worked for the National Weather Service, I was basically a liaison with 12 different counties in northeast Montana, at all levels of government and tribal and everything, state, local, federal, you name it, I worked with them. And I traveled a heck of a lot, and I dealt with a lot of different people. And I love the job. I miss it sometimes, but I like talking to people. The key to talking to people, something I'm accused of not doing sometimes, is to listen. We all have that issue, I think. We all want to say something, and we kind of get it stuck in our head, and we want to get it out, and it's tough sometimes, and we don't. But communication is critical, and if you don't listen, you can't communicate. I think we need to listen. That's another part of our job. I think I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I didn't miss anybody that time, did I? Good. For the next question, we'll start with Lance. And every, all of you have mentioned your constituency, and some have recognized the, the difference of the different schools in our, our district. So how do you see yourself representing the needs of your constituency, be that Zone 3, 4, or 5, while also working with the full board to build policies for the entirety of this very unique district?
Well, I think that communication is key, has been kind of a theme throughout here. Making sure that, you know, I'm doing my part for our schools here in Newport, reaching out to parents and having them know where, you know, when meetings are, when to come, how to voice your opinion, how to get a response, stuff like that, you know, the, the training and what you need to give to those parents so that they understand that it's not as hard as maybe some people think it is to reach out and talk with a board member. I think, looking at the district as a whole, you know, we do have a very diverse culture. I think that, making sure that all of those diversities are accounted for, and then coming to a consensus as a board as to what will be the best way forward for the district as a whole. It might not work out well for, you know, some areas, but I think that there's a give and take on that, and we need to be mindful of that and making sure that we are accounting for that and maybe having to adjust if we do hear that it is overwhelming some of the other areas. So I think just being open to those things.
Thank you. Ron, you want to tackle that one?
Sure. So we're elected at large. We're elected by the entire county. Actually, we're elected by people who have students, who don't have students, who pay property taxes. We don't represent a specific zone. We're only required to live in that zone. And the idea behind that is in a county-wide district, each area has a representative to channel that communication into the overall conversation. That's the way we've operated, or at least I've operated on the board for almost 19 years. Many people believe Newport gets everything, but the bottom line is we have the highest homeless population and the highest number of kids on subsidized meals. It's sad, but we are a county with a lot of mobility, and there's an upside and a downside to that. But as the representative to Zone 3, it is my job to, to listen, obviously, and to bring that flavor, that discussion, what I hear at J.C. Markner, Fred Meyer, or Safeway, to the bigger board discussion. Each member of the board has a different background that they bring. Some retirees, some in the tourism business, some in hospitality, some in working for the power company. That's the flavor. But being elected by every voter in Lincoln County, not just the ones within my zone, brings with it kind of that, that big-picture view. I have tried for years to, to take that approach, and I think we've been pretty successful. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually going to pause for just a moment and pick your brain, because I tried to get an answer to a question today, and I'm not sure that I was successful. When you mentioned you're elected at large, when this goes to the ballot, I live in Newport, do I only see the four of you that are running for this zone? Or do I also cast votes for the others that are running in, in the others?
You're, you're going to get a, you're going to get an opportunity to vote for all three zones that are on the ballot.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the person who could answer that at the clerk's office today was not in the office, and the three of us brainstormed the, the two that were there, and we're not sure that we had the right answer.
And it is unique to a county-wide school district, and of the 197 districts in Oregon, we are the last one remaining. Actually, Moro, I own that you, where you came from was the last one.
That I did know, and Pat wins this argument, so. All right, I'm sorry to have sidetracked us. Mike, you're up next. Would you like me to get?
Please.
Thank you. So we see you as representing the needs of your constituents in the zone for which you were elected, but you're also working on the full board to build policies for the entirety of this very unique district. And how do you see yourself in that role?
Well, we go back to the other thing, the first thing, and that's communication, again, talking to people, both the board members and other aspects of our district. I hear the same argument, Newport gets it all, it gets everything, and nobody else gets anything. Each district, each area has had different stuff that they've gotten over the years. I, I've watched Walport go from that mess they had down there to a beautiful school for both, you know, grade, and everything down there's been built. They've done a great job. So, and I've been in there and worked in there. So, I mean, I really, really found that fascinating. When I first got here at Lincoln City, their high school, Taft High School, to me, it looked so much better than Newport. Now it kind of has reversed. So when I go there, when I was going there recently, it looks more rundown, more, it has more problems. And we've done some good work here in Newport. And I know they've built other buildings elsewhere in the district, and I feel that basically we need to try and solve the problems each, this, each school has, as a group, to find the money to fix things. And so we can't do that if we don't work together.
Thank you. Erica.
So it is a unique situation to be like a district, but with the four, the zones underneath. I mean, I think it's important that, that I am able to represent the specific needs of our area and be able to represent them well to a larger group and make sure that our needs are heard. I have heard the stories, too, about Newport getting everything, but we have to realize that we have a very unique population and needs here with the homelessness that we have to make sure that we communicate that well and that we're able to share the needs for our local community.
Thank you. Peter?
Thanks, Jean. As I mentioned in my opening, I taught at Toledo High School for 28 years, and I am a boomer through and through. I've continued working at this, at the school volunteering. I was an aspire mentor for the last several years, and I was in the building, working with students every couple of weeks until the scholarships were due for the Lincoln County Foundation scholarships. I also have coached swimming, the Aqua Boomers, that's our, that's our team name, we're Boomers, but the swim team is Aqua Boomers. And that gives me an opportunity to get to know families and, or to continue, to, sorry, to continue to know families in the east area. I, I know the east area, I know the families. I have generations of students and their families that I've taught. But that doesn't mean that I don't know the other areas of the district. I was a technology integration mentor, and I worked with teachers at Taft, in Newport, in Walport. And so I know those communities, I know those schools. As a school board member, of course, I will be more closely connected to families in the school in the east area. But I think it's important that I also visit those other schools and know what's happening with those schools, know what's, what, what the issues are. So as a school board member, to the, to the extent that it's acceptable, reasonable for me to do so, I will be visiting those other schools beyond just the school board meetings when they're held in each of the areas.
Thank you. Eric.
Well, for me, it should be rather easy, right? I'm a Walport graduate who used to be the voice of the Taft Tigers, broadcast games for the Toledo Boomers, and my great uncle Norman got to start teaching at Newport High School back in the day. So I do want to mention Centilla McKinley, who's also running for Zone 5, because when I spoke with her about both of us running, we wanted to get an idea of why we're both running. And the reason I bring this up is because she's extremely focused on the poverty issue for our students and the importance of that. So these are issues that are broad-based. It's a human decency and respect issue for all of our students as some of the primary needs. Ron brought up how students transfer within the district. When I was in school, we had teachers transfer within the district. We had one of them come from Taft to Walport, he had a toilet seat as a hall pass. Mr. Stallings was great, by the way. So i- it's one of those things that we just recognize that this is a community we're part of. When I was in school, we're the Valco League, so we all literally played in the same league. Fortunately, we balanced that out. But hey, when Walport beat Philomath in football, that was a big deal, because Philomath's 4A, Walport's 2A. And there is a Lincoln Benton Lynn district, too, that we're also a part of. So there's a community within a community, within the region, within the state, within the West Coast, within the feds. So it's all part of that academic ecosystem, I guess, is one way of putting it. And if we try and pull too much from one area, it brings everything else out of balance, and we got to have that homeostasis.
Thank you. And I appreciate your mentioning Centilla. She's, let's see, she, she's responsible for a literacy project that beats tonight, which is the reason that she could be with us.
Ocean Spray Literacy Center.
And she also doesn't do Zoom. So that might have to change. Okay, moving on to the next question, and this time we will begin with Peter. How will you prioritize programs beyond the three Rs, such as art, music, drama, industrial arts, athletics, foreign language, and beyond?
What, what a, what a good question. The three Rs, of course, underlie everything. I started my career in education with the understanding that you needed to teach kids to learn, to, to read in order for them to learn. And so it's critical that kids pick up on those, those skills as early as they can and continue to develop them. I also taught light and language arts, so I have a great appreciation for the humanities. And I think the humanities are a critical aspect of an education for, for everyone. All those other areas, the arts, music, athletics, shop, CTE, all of those other elements of an education are critical. What the school district has to do is provide the platform for kids to find engagement. I remember when, early in my career, I was always kind of upset at athletics, especially in the spring, because when softball, baseball came, the kids were gone, and they, they'd miss two, three days a week. But it took me a little while to realize that what was most important is that kids find avenues for engagement. Athletics was one, music, drama, programs that I taught, video production, that appealed to a certain number of kids. And journalism, I had kids working late nights to put out an issue of the, of Toledo High's newspaper, The Boomerang. Whatever it was, we, we needed to find something for kids to get involved in and to, and to develop in their own particular ways. That's true at the high school, it's also true at the elementary level as well. Music and art, can't stress how important those are as well.
Thank you. Eric, I think we're pretty sure where you stand on athletics. Can you get into some of these other areas as well? Eric, I think we're pretty sure where you stand on athletics. Can you get into some of these other areas as well?
Yeah, well, so prioritizing them is really about how do we use them today? For example, and I noticed Rob Robin's on here, I saw her at the radio station in the past. People don't really tune into the radio station that much, being honest, but radio waves are not going away. Radio waves get used in different ways than we used them 100 years ago. So we just embrace and roll with things. So like the surf outside, you just find the different ways that something is being used. At the same time, Peter brought up technical skills. A rafting square and a speed square is still very useful and used today and there's a shortage of skilled labor. So teaching a kid a rafter length with mathematics is something that is very vital for a lot of kids because there are different ways that everyone learns. Athletics is extremely important, especially as far as getting our brains wired for learning. But it's not that everyone has the same thing. Maybe someone likes to use a tether ball. But if they're getting a bit of exercise, it helps them learn. So I think we motivate students through the different techno- technology and ways that we use everything today. So podcasting, using video, all of these things are skills that go back to the foundational aspects. But because they're flashy, because it's new, it motivates them to want to do these things a little bit more than, okay, let's bring out the book and let's look go out to chapter four. So we just have to use use our adult brains to motivate children to find creative ways to learn because they want to learn. They just don't like the lame excuses we give them sometimes.
Thank you. And thanks to the for the shout out to Robin because she's behind making all of this stuff work tonight. Erica, can you talk a little bit about going beyond three Rs, so to speak?
Well, of course, like was already said, the three Rs are the foundations, that base of everything. But having worked across with a lot of adults on the autism spectrum, I can tell you that they never get fired from a job because they don't know how to do their budget or, you know, get something done. That's like, well, they include academic skills. The reason that they don't make it is because of the soft skills. And the soft skills are those things that you learn in activities like art and music and athletics, especially in athletics about working on a team. You know, and being able to be a team player, but they're invaluable skills that kids learn in these other areas. And so I think that they are very important to ensure that they that we were able to stay sustain those programs. Because I know some other districts have not been able to do so because they're crucial for our children's success as they grow into adulthood.
Thank you. Next is Mike. Are you good with the question or you want me to repeat it? You're muted, Mike.
Sorry about that. I've got it. Yeah. My daughter went to school when she was in high school up in Upper Michigan. We moved a lot because of the weather service. And up there, her school was so good in the music program that she actually went and performed for the President of the United States. Her school did. And they traveled across country for that and it was very impressive. As I sat, as we watched her go through high school, she eventually got into the Rotary Program and went down to Brazil and spent a year there. Her choices were amazing at this place. When we moved to Eastern Montana, it all disappeared. My son did not have the same things that she had. To me, she she was able to work on art and music and all that. He didn't have it. And it wasn't pushed as much. We asked a school board member there once, why is we so weak in our music program? Well, you don't need music. All you need is an Oompa Band and you're good for sports. That's it. And that's so sad to me because if you don't nourish the left side of your brain, how can you nourish the right side? I mean, you need both. And there are so many people that are oriented in one way or the other and very seldom twang shell meet, so to speak, that you can't leave out the kids that are going one way and not the other. We need to have good programs that cover the arts, you know, the three Rs are wonderful. We need those too. And the other thing that drives me crazy is when I went to high school, and I'm sure there's a couple here that remember this, we had shops and we had to learn it. I went to Benson High in Portland, Polytechnic. And if you didn't have shops, you didn't have nothing. Okay? And engineering, the whole nine yards. And to me, we need something like that back in schools because if nothing else, and even if we went in a tech direction and computer technology and whatnot, we need something that gives the kids that are oriented towards that kind of thing, an avenue, a place to go.
Thank you. Ron?
You'll love this one because I'm going to talk about Alamo Gordo High School. And I know you had family down that way, but the last two years I was a military kid. And my dad moved around a lot too. He was a meteorologist is actually at Mount St. Air Force Base for quite some time.
Really?
I went to a high school where everybody's dad was quite literally a rocket scientist. White Sands Missile Range, Holloman Air Force Base, the space technology. Band was what kept me in school. Of all things, now it was a really high achieving band, but it was a team. It was an athlete. It was an athletic type of performance. They were highly regarded across the Southwest. However, I move up here. We don't have that. We've got a bunch of kids walking down the street in jeans in an Oompa Band. We just established a music instrument fund at the school board. Our musical instruments are non-existent. You have, you want an economic barrier to kids being able to take a music program and it's $15, $20 a month to lease an instrument that they can't afford. That's not the environment I was in and Dr. Gray and I have fought pretty hard to establish this particular fund so that we can offer that. We need to keep kids in the classroom and the way we do it is beyond the three Rs. We give them programs they want to be there for, career technical education, welding at the Port of Toledo, forest science at Taft now and at Walport High School, jobs that they can get when they get out. My son participated in a program at Newport Middle. It was called Strut, Students Recycling Used Technology. Community members donated PCs and our kids put them together so that we could have PCs in the classroom. Fortunately, we're long beyond using twice-used PCs in the classroom environment. But it gave kids skills that they use today. We need to, we need to pile on to that. We need to add on to skills they will use tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lance?
Well, you know, I think all the candidates have given some wonderful, wonderful answers and I agree with quite a few of them. For me, working at the airport, working with my wife, Gillian is a kindergarten teacher. We host the annual kindergarten visit every year. And it is an awesome, awesome experience and we get involvement with from the fire department, the police department, you know, the Oregon State Police Department, the Sheriff's Department. There's a couple of people who bring their airplanes over. Occasionally, we'll get the Coast Guard lifeline is there. So I really think that finding those opportunities for kids to go and see and say, wow, that that's awesome. That's what I would like to do. And from there, you know, they fall back into looking at what other, you know, talking with pilots and stuff. Not everybody who goes to school wants to become a pilot, but they need something to fall back on. And that's where they get those, you know, soft skills are critical. You get your your team building from that, learning music, art, everything like that, woodshop. I took woodshop in high school. All of those things are critical, but looking at what is coming up, I think we need to keep up with the times as well. Not only look at the past things because it's very important as a homeowner to be able to hang a door or fix a faucet. Those are critical skills that people need. You can get paid for that as well and very well paid for that. But you know, taking, taking a look at all of those items, learning that, giving them skills, looking towards the future. You know, I've also worked with Dr. Chuck Getter in his drone school. He's got students up there that are, he teaches how to become drone pilots and they're doing amazing work around here with LiDAR. And then also, one quick thing is just our energy resiliency with the big wave coming in. Kids learning how other types of technology and, you know, electronical solar panel, wave energy, things like that, wind power might work.
Thank you. So I'm encouraged that all of you are supportive of some of those extras that I think are so critical for young people. Thank you. You also all touched a little bit on some of the challenges that that face the kids in our school and our culturally diverse communities. What can you and the board do to ensure inclusivity of all students, including students of color, LGBTQIA+ students and others facing the societal barriers to a successful educational experience? That was a challenge to figure out how to word that question. I'm trying to include some of the the shelter challenge kids. And we just got a lot of problems in this community that make it tough for them. And so we're going to start out with Mike this time.
Goodie. Could you, okay. How do I say this? I agree with you 150% on diversity and inclusion. We have a very large population of Hispanics in this community and it seems at times that they feel left out. And we have so much rotation, not just between towns, but people moving in and out because they're having a hard time finding jobs or whatever. And so there's there are, these people do all the work in our county in places like hotels and restaurants. And they work two and three jobs. And one of the issues that they have is taking care of their children while they're doing these jobs. We see the same thing with some of our employees in the school district where they have, this came up during the pandemic. It's been a problem. Teachers couldn't come to work because they had little children at home and nobody to take care of them. There were actually instances where parents were having kids stay home to take care of the younger siblings who then were not getting their schoolwork done. And this happened a lot. And so there's got to be some way, I just want to say, you know, World War II, when you had, you know, what do you call it, Rosie the Riveter doing all the work, building everything because the men were all gone. The federal government created care programs for their children. I'd love to see something like that from the feds or state or whatever for these situations, especially now. This may not get the minutes. It looks like it's getting better and I I hope I'm hopeful as everybody else is. But what happens if it happens again? Do we continue to struggle against it or do we find solutions? And to me, that's a solution. Find a way to help the parents with their children that have to do all this work. Reach out to talk to everybody all the time. I understand the superintendent is trying to do that and I really appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you. Ron, could you speak to what the board can do to ensure inclusivity?
Absolutely. And I think we're we're well on our way right now. And you can never really do enough, I guess, is the is the posture that I take. When I speak with community members or when community members come into a school board meeting and to address the board, they're taking time out of their evening. They could be in a better place. We need to be there. They they want to be there. The problem that we run across is if you don't act on what they ask, you didn't hear them. That's kind of the perception sometimes. So we've we've struggled with that over the years. So from an inclusivity point of view, the board has two specific goals that we're in the middle of. One is part of our five-year plan and the other is an active goal right now. One is the equitable education framework. We have an equity committee that's been meeting for the last year. Chair Colley is on that as a standing member. The other board members rotate through so that we don't find ourselves in a quorum deciding or taking testimony outside of a published board meeting. That's another one of the challenges we deal with, but we're good at it. The equity lens that we will put together helps us because it's not just Hispanic families. We have Russian-speaking families. We have mom-speaking families. We have a number of families out there that do not speak the the language at a level of literacy that our current communications methods is tuned to. So with that and with the outreach or culturally specific outreach to those communities, working with our county, city and other partners that are already doing a really good job. We need to make sure people are heard. And in many cases, it's not having them come to us. It's figuring out a way for us to go to them and to recognize, for them to recognize that we are a school board member, that we are their school board member and that we are there to to listen. And sometimes we don't necessarily act, but we definitely listen and we hear what they're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Thanks, Jean. I think the school board and the school district has an obligation to meet the needs of all the students that come through the schools. And that that is a challenge because it really, it really becomes a challenge in understanding differences. And underscoring all those differences is just a an obligation to honor human rights and the value of every single individual. The district has started their their equity committee. It's drafted their their ultimate purpose statement. It's a good start. The trick is going to be how are they going to implement that? And the the school board will will see that the progress of that. Hopefully, the committee will be reporting back regularly about their progress. Hopefully, they're going to include outreach to the Hispanic community, the the mom community, LGBTQT community. And they can use community resources to do that. PFLAG is a resource that they could use. And it's so critical that the the board fosters an environment so all those kids can can flourish and reach their potential. It's not going to be easy because there's lots of difficulties that underrepresented groups face. Language was mentioned. Culture, definitely. And so hiring staff that that understands those differences is going to be a critical thing. And I think the board can can support policies that will help bring that about.
Thank you. Lance?
Thank you, Jean. So, you know, Ron and Peter really have made a few good points about the diversity that is in the county. A lot of them are migrant workers, very diverse, moving in and out, following, you know, where they make their money. That's their trade, being a migrant worker. A lot of those kids come in and out of the communities as far as going to school and whatnot. And it really is a challenge, I think, for the board finding ways to meet the needs and meet their understanding and finding people like who speak mum is is a critical one because there's not a lot of people that speak that dialect of mum. But also, how do you keep, you know, everybody informed? It's kind of a giant melting pot question, really. Such diversity, you know, you can have staff available. They're, you know, hiring bilingual staff reaching out like Ron said with other community governmental agencies like the county, the city, have people available that can help translate, making sure that, you know, documents and homework is being translated into language that people can understand. But then the other side of that is making sure that our staff is understanding what, you know, those differences in diversity of the culture are coming back in so that the staff is also properly handling those questions that might come up and answer them properly.
Thank you. Erica?
Thank you, Jean. Can you repeat the question again for me, please? Thank you.
What can you and the board do to ensure inclusivity of all students, including students of color, LGBTQIA+? Others facing societal barriers to a successful educational experience?
Thanks. I agree with. Things that have just been said by the other candidates. I agree that we have to create. Foster an environment where all kids can flourish. And that does take in hiring staff that have the ability to understand. The needs for understanding the diverse needs of their students. And also more training for them about how to make sure that everyone is included. The other thing that's, I can't remember who said this, I think it might have been Peter about helping families outside of school. You know, if you're going to have equity, you have to make sure that everybody has access. To, like we gave everybody. A computer, which is great, but then they go home and they don't have internet, you know, and so they can't access. Their education. So I think we need to look at those things and kind of figure out a way that we can support those families. And, you know, really help our kids to have successful educational experiences. You know, another thing in this that's kind of included when you think about diversity is, is sometimes the. Isolation that certain children might feel if they, they aren't able to find a community for themselves. And so I think we have to work hard to create, help kids create those communities, almost like. You know, find their niche and find friends who share the same thing, the same interests. So that they feel a part of a community. Yeah. Oh, and one other thing that I thought about is, you know. I think that the district has done a great job about working to sustain different programs that are needed. So. We really have to ensure such things as sustaining our food services that we provide because. If a child is hungry or doesn't have the good nutrition, they're not ready to learn, able to learn. So we really need to make sure that we can sustain those programs.
Thank you. And Eric.
Okay, so one of the board goals actually represents using the, bridging the community in the school district. And so. As, as a way that the school board can be more inclusive for all of the students. First, personal ethos, mean people suck. So if we start to develop this, and it's something that kind of tends to be learned. I, I'm a big believer that this is a nurture issue. It's not a nature issue. That people become hostile towards others. And I think a big, speaking broadly, I think the underlying theme really is that people are impoverished. And this is an issue that, as I said at the beginning, is something that the school board can't specifically address. But we have to look at, how can we kind of work around this thing? Because we can't just go employ every parent with a well-paying job with a roof over their heads, as great as that is. So. How can we use the resources that the school board and school district already have? How can we open up a gym more for an event? How can we use video cameras and record so that someone can give a lesson about their history and their background, something that they're facing? Our ability to record history in a moment's notice is something that's completely new to us. I remember being a college student. The Green Revolution in Egypt. Was something that happened live on Twitter for crying out loud. So we have ways. That we can bring everyone in our community together by acknowledging, A, that. A better community is what we all want to live in. So when I look around and I see things where somebody isn't helping out, I'm saying, is that the community you want to live in? And naturally at a young age, kids are willing to share. Elementary kids will share their food with another kid. Somewhere along the way, we start because we, we go without. So I think the best way we can be inclusive is by recognizing that we're all part of this boat. And if someone's sinking it somewhere else, we've got to help that person out.
Thank you very much. I have to throw this in. My granddaughter, who's now 13, started school in a dual-language program because, as I said, they live in a small community in Eastern Oregon. That's probably 70% Latino. So she is so fluent in Spanish. When she was 10, she ran across a family in an airport in London that was Spanish-speaking and didn't know which way to go. And on her own, she approached them and helped them with their challenges and, and got them on the right bus to the right airplane. And we were very proud of her. So that's the things we can do for our kids if we can start them early and, and give them the tools they need. Okay, I'm done. Had to say that. So we will move to our closing statements, one minute each. And we'll begin with Eric.
All right. Well, I just want to say again, I'm not running against Santila. I'm running with Santila for the students of Zone Five. This is something I want to reiterate because whether you vote for her, whether you vote for me, I'm going to be very supportive. Of everything that she's doing down there because we have to start collectively doing more. I think that we need to embrace the ocean, specifically as it relates to bringing in technology, to inspiring our students in new ways. For crying out loud, we're the one place in the world that rehabilitated an orca back into the wild. And we have a rinky-dink of a community college program, even though. The only thing setting the aquarium back from being top five is that we're a 50,000-person community, not a million people in San Francisco. So there's a lot of great things. There's. Our retired community is actually a great resource for our students if we start taking their information, their lived experiences that they were all a part of. So that we can form more apprenticeships for students. So. I love everyone. I love this community that we're a part of and I want us to do more than we have been doing. And let's just do the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike.
I don't know if I can top that. I agree with you 150%. I mean, I moved to Newport when I came back to Oregon because I'd always wanted to live on the coast. When my daughter got her job here at the, at the high school, it was like I ran, not walked to the coast. This is home to me. I love it here. And I firmly believe. That we have to do everything we can to improve our school district even more. There's lots to be done. And we have to accommodate not just the kids that are in the towns, but the kids in the East County and whatnot. Those are the ones who took it in the shorts this time because of the lack of internet. We need to find a way, if this ever happens again, to get to them. One of the things that I saw quickly was a bus in South Carolina. It took a bus from a local, a local library did, put a hotspot in it and used it to get to the smaller communities. That to me is brilliant. Why can't we achieve something like that?
We do.
I think we can if we work at it. I'm good.
Yes, it's important to say that we, I think this district has been doing that if I'm correct. But that's great. Good idea. Lance.
Sorry, I was having computer problems there. Eric, we love you too, man. Just. The, the passion that comes out of you is, is inspiring and, you know, the rest of the candidates, thank you for, you know, joining us this evening. And allowing me to participate as well, Jean, and Jean for keeping us on track. But there's been a lot of great ideas that have been put out there tonight. And I think that whoever is elected really needs to listen to this. Before they go into their first day and really bring a. Bigger part of the conversation, as Ron was saying. You've got a lot of information here from everybody. To take that back to the board, to help drive the district in a positive way. You know, and work diligently with your fellow board members. To make sure that everybody, every student, every staff member is in a safe, healthy. And happy environment and is getting the best possible education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica.
You're muted. I really thought I was going to get it through a whole talk and not do that, but. I did. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. I really enjoyed hearing everyone's responses tonight. I wish everybody the best. And also thank you, Jean, and, and the Women's League for hosting this event. I think it's a great opportunity for many people to hear. Everybody's position on things. There is this quote that I liked a long time ago where someone said, we have to be able to move forward fast enough. That we can make progress and yet we need to be able to move slow enough that the last person can still keep up. And I just feel like with, with inclusion and with. The diversity, we have to be able to do both. We have to be able to move forward. We have to be able to include everyone. And I, again, I just want to say thank you and I appreciate the time today. Thanks again.
Thank you. Ron.
Well, I was really expecting some budget questions tonight because that is going to be the big challenge moving forward. As you know, three of the five board members are up on the ballot. Two of them are guaranteed to change because the incumbents are not running. If the governor's budget goes through, we are 2.6 million in the hole. The district is going to have some tough decisions to make in the next. Remainder of the, of the next biennium. I've been on the board since I was the only board member. Right after the recall in 2002, I found myself four months on the job and the only board member. I was on the board that hired Tom Rennerson and I was on the board that hired Karen Gray. Those are excellent superintendents who helped us through two very difficult times for the district. Stability and continuity are what we are going to need in the next two years. And I hope to get your vote to be on the board that does that. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and for all of the voters in Lincoln County who tuned in this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And Peter, we'll let you close it out.
Thanks, Jean. I want to echo Erica's appreciation of all the people running for the three open positions on the board. I think that's great that we have. So many people who are interested in participating in our democracy. That's really great. And thank you, Jean. And I want to say that I appreciate the opportunity the League of Women Voters is providing the candidates to share their perspectives for school board. I'm Peter Vinci and I'm running for the Zone Four position. As I've discovered during this campaign through listening to many of the stakeholders in the district. We are facing a huge challenge, a challenge coming back from the pandemic. I see the return to normal also as an opportunity to reinvigorate teaching and learning. As a school board member, I will apply my own teaching experience to the policies the board creates to foster learning. I hope the voters of Lincoln County will vote for me to become part of the board.
Thank you. Well, that brings our evening to a close. I, I am truly impressed with the quality of folks that have stepped up to be willing to work in this difficult position. I, you're right, I avoided budgetary questions because there's still so many questions out there that we haven't answered yet. But with, from my background, figuring out how to manage ever shrinking budgets is, is most certainly the biggest challenge you probably will face. But I thought it was important tonight to talk a little bit about other priorities and what we think in terms of what we think about a child's education. So. If, everybody should remember that if you have any more questions that you would like to ask of these board people, the contact information for all of the candidates. Can be found at the Lincoln County Clerk's election site. And I'm sure that they'd be happy to have you reach out to them. So we have an election coming up May 18th. Your ballots will be in the mail before very long. And I thank you very much for giving us your time this evening.